Good evening, everyone. We're doing our virtual meeting of the Normal Public Library Board of Trustees this evening via Zoom, and we're also streaming on YouTube as this occurs. And we'll go through our agenda for the evening. Just as a reminder, when we do votes, actually, we have no action items on tonight's agenda other than approval of expenditures and minutes, and when we do, we do roll call vote for that. JD, are you all good and ready for that?
Of course.
All right.
I mean, yes.
Here's what we've got on the agenda tonight. We're going to do review of the agenda, which includes corrections or additions, approval of minutes, the previous meeting, approval expenditures, the president's report, public comments, the library director's report, foundation report, new business, including the 2021-24 Strategic Planning Process, which is a discussion item, COVID-19 update, which is also a discussion item, and the fiscal year of 20, sorry, 21 to 26 budget discussion. Any unfinished business of which I'm not aware of. And then suggested items for next agenda, followed by our next meeting and adjournment. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. That was the overview. Is there corrections or additions to that on the agenda? Hearing none, moving on to number two. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting is an action item. Would someone like to move the approval of the minute from our last meeting?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Pam. Do we have a second? So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Pam and Jim, and JD, when you're ready, if you'd like to call the roll.
Yes. Jess Ray.
Approved.
Terry Lindberg, absent. Jim Rogal.
Approved.
JD Davis, approved. Kaitlyn Trunell, absent. Aaron Ripley-Gitarik, approved. Pam Lewis.
Approved.
We have it unanimous, so we'll now move to number three with approval of expenditures, which is also an action item. Would someone like to move the approval of our payroll and of our purchasing?
I move to approve $122,512.26.
Well, on my end, Pam has frozen up. I don't know. So Pam, you froze up during that, when you were making your motion to restate?
If I freeze up again, somebody else take it. Move to approve expenses totaling $122,512.20 from June 18th through July 22nd, and two June payrolls totaling $151,682.79.
Thank you. Pam, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Erin. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, we'll go ahead for the vote. JD, would you like to call the vote, please?
Jess Ray.
Approved.
Terry Lindberg, absent. Jim Rogal.
Approved.
JD Davis, approved. Kaitlyn Trunell, absent. Aaron Ripley-Gitarik, approved. Pam Lewis.
Approved.
Thank you all very much. When I'll go into the president's report, I do have a few items this evening. One, congratulations to Aaron Ripley-Gitarik for being not only in the local paper for corn, but for being added to the Green Top Board. Congratulations on that, Erin. I'd also like to congratulate Stephanie Davis-Call, who's the new university librarian at Ames Library at Illinois Wesleyan University. She took over this July, so as always, we always are excited about our library colleagues in the community, and we wish her well in her new role. And then, just as a reminder, we haven't talked about our mission and vision in a while, but since that's going to be part of strategic planning, I thought we'd just kind of re, take a moment to restate those items, just so that we're all in the same area here, and it's on our website. But our mission statement is the Normal Public Library is a valuable educational and recreational resource that enriches the quality of life for community residents. And our vision statement is the library is a catalyst for literacy, learning, creativity, and innovation, and we connect, reflect, and engage our community and our strong stewards of our valuable resources. So we don't want those just to be something that we put on a, in a binder and put on a shelf somewhere. We want to continue to remember those items as we go through. And the final item for my report tonight is I do ask that everyone on the board, when they have the opportunity, to please engage with our patrons, the members of the Normal community who are out there. When we have an opportunity, which is much more difficult these days, but when we get a chance, do ask our folks that are out there how the library's doing. And do think about particular areas, like how are we doing in people's views in terms of diversity, equity, accessibility, and inclusion? So I think those are all important things that sometimes, you know, we get into the way we see things, and we may not hear some other opinions out there. So I think it would be good for all of us to try and do what we can to hear from the community in those areas. So with that, I'm done with the president's report. We now go into public comment, which my understanding is we do not have anyone scheduled for public comment.
Correct.
So we'll now move into library director's report. Brian, what would you like to share with us this evening?
All right. I want to thank you, Jess, for hearing the mission and vision. I think that's great. And just a little preview, we'll talk about later, but we think our strategic plan is we're aiming in the right spot. We want to, we're looking to do better with all those objectives. So lots more to come there, particularly, you know, diversifying and providing resources to the underserved in the community. So that's, we always want to do better on all these measures, but that's particularly one that we want to do better on. We continue, you know, an interesting, interesting time in the life of the library. Circulation is down, obviously, from this time last year. Curbside service resumed on June 8th, so that it felt great to get back in engaging our patrons and serving them. That's working very, very well. We added some site analytics. Last time Jim had asked about some website analytics, so Jennifer Williams was able to create a report there. So if there's any questions or comments there, please let me know, and we can tweak that report. But it is helpful. We'll include that from this point forward in the monthly stats to get a snapshot of what's happening there. We're exploring how we can differentiate or, you know, separate the public views from staff views so that we can pull the staff element out of there, and that'll give us a true representation of the public side. So we're working on that. Accessible restrooms continue to move forward, you know, more slowly than we would hope, but we're getting things done. It's just we're kind of bouncing from contractor to contractor. So we had some masonry work that we had to wait on. That was done. We had to move a portion of brick wall out of foot. We were able to salvage those bricks that were surplus at that point and fill in the through wall return, something that we wanted to do for a long time. And we have a lot of pipe insulation in the restrooms at the moment. Not on the pipe yet, but close. It's right there. You can see it. Have a meeting Tuesday morning with the architects and the foreman and the vice president of Felmy, trying to, I've asked for a completion date, and I'm trying to get that, get us all on the same page there. So looking forward to that meeting. So we are still without restrooms in the main floor, which is, as Jess and I discussed last week, we feel comfortable remaining closed, given the circumstances. When we initially planned this restroom project, we'd planned to be open the entire time and have patrons use restrooms either in the basement and second floor. Given the need for hand washing, at the moment, we feel better not being open. So hopefully, the next time we meet, we will be very close to being open, if not ready to open, or at least have that opportunity. We'll see where all the numbers go between now and then. The West Roof, we're only waiting on the warranty inspection, which is supposed to happen this week. So that'll be great to have that project finally completely wrapped up. Curbside service continues to thrive. Staff are doing a great job. The browser packs are working really well. We have a lot of browsers. I'm a browser. I appreciate the fact that we're serving the browser community, so really, really going well. So we have that process now, and if you use it, hopefully, it's worked well for you. It's a pretty efficient process, and we can serve a lot of customers. So we're, staff are just, they've done really well in that. And again, we really enjoy seeing our patrons. This last month, too, we've done the summer reading distribution packet and then the Allison Brooks More kindergarten prizes. So the more that we can see our public, the better. So it feels really good to have more interaction. And hopefully, we can continue that moving forward. Strategic planning process, we'll talk about here in a little bit. Staff survey was completed, and we'll talk about some next steps when we get to that. Summer reading continues to go well. I've heard many comments about compliments about the story walks. Those are really being enjoyed this year. So it's great to get out and kind of combine the parks and the library. That's a great partnership. I mentioned Allison Brooks More kindergarten. We completed that and just passed our one-year anniversary there. So that was the program, as I mentioned before. I really want to get that going. I think that's very, very important, and it's relatively easy for us because we have a fantastic staff leading it, and it's just a great program for the community. It's been very well received. Thanks to the board, we were able to announce the elimination of overdue fines and DVD fees. That's been an overwhelming positive response from the community, so thank you for that. We had a joint announcement with Bloomington, and then the morning that was released, Champagne's board meeting was at night, so they were really expected to have that information. And they did indeed also eliminate overdue fines in Champagne, too. So I feel that was just, again, really well received by the community. Currently working on the library audit and the foundation audit, which go, which are part of the overall town audit, so working our way through that. Budget process, probably kind of a fairly easy budget this year, I think. We're, you know, we've, we've kind of become very lean throughout this pandemic, and we plan to stay pretty lean as we move forward. One big question I had with some staff was, as we develop collections, you know, we're weighing physical collections versus digital collections. So what are we seeing there in terms of usage? We want to really continue to grow a very robust physical collection, because that's, you know, part of what we're known for. But how do we balance that with digital collections? And what we've seen throughout the pandemic is, once Kerbit opened, then a lot of that digital usage declined, which is good for a number of reasons. People still really want their physical items, which is good for us, too. So that was a relief to see that the, when the physical items aren't available, that really drives that digital usage up. But once physical items become available, it does come back down. So, you know, we anticipate more digital in the future. But again, relieved to see the high demand for physical items, and we want to continue to grow that very robust collection. We have seen some supply chain issues in our physical items, so kind of inconsistent in terms of we order from a vendor, you know, we'll get partial shipments, you know, full shipments, no shipment. So there are still, are, there are very real supply chain issues that we're facing, but, you know, our orders are in, and we're responding once those items come in. Let's see. Landscaping, if you haven't driven by the south side of the library, encourage you to do that. On college, Normal Parks and Rec are putting in entirely new landscaping for us. We had a large tree come down this week. Actually, it came down today, the final piece, and really opened it up, and it looks great. So Parks and Rec, they designed all this on their own. They're putting in, you know, an amazing number of plants. It's all native, very hardy species, so we're excited about that. It'll kind of mirror the Ecology Action Center's rain garden. It'll kind of go together, basically. So we'll have a little rain garden in the center of our building to help address a water issue there. So I'm really excited about that and thankful to Parks and Rec. Electrostatic sprayer, I'm very excited about this. So we ordered this very early March. We were out kind of in front of the demand for this, and we got one in, and we've used it in the library. So these are very sought after because the electrostatic sprayer, it actually, the mist clings to surfaces, so it stays there for a while, as opposed to like a spray and wipe. You kind of lose some of the effectiveness there. So very thankful to have this, and we're using it all over the building. User book sale, lots of questions here. You know, we are exploring venues. We think we found a good venue, which I won't say yet, but with plenty of space. But we're going to run a plan by the health department and say, this is, this is what we think makes sense. Obviously, each day we would get closer. We're looking at a, maybe a mid-September timeframe for a sale. But we don't want to jump the gun. We want to, you know, be very careful about this, and if we go through all this effort to get everything out there and staff with volunteers, will people come? That's the question. So, because we've heard comments already, I heard one today. I was talking to someone whose father, who's elderly, likes to come to the library every day when we're open, and I was asking how his needs were being met, you know, at home, et cetera, in terms of, he can, he would like to come research financial news. So I asked if he was accessing any financial news, you know, online, et cetera. He is, but he doesn't like it as well. But what his son told me, even if we were open, his dad wouldn't come because he's just not comfortable coming, unfortunately. So we were very aware of that feeling out there, that a lot of the public, a lot of our patrons just aren't comfortable coming yet. So same question with the book sale. If we have a book sale, you know, how many of our regulars would come? We're not sure, but we're certainly, we would love to have a big book sale. We have our basement full of books. We have the shipping container, you know, almost half full of books, probably. So we're, we're close, but we're just trying to be careful. So more news hopefully in the near future regarding that. Virtual programming, staff continue to do a great job there. We hear, you know, positive feedback from the community. Planning on that being our primary method of programming through the end of 2020 in terms of planning and how we spend our time and what we can confidently offer the community. And finally, the good news here, CDBG HUD grant. Town of Normal is allocating 15,000 of its CDBG grants to serve local kids, partially through the Discovery Museum, partially through the library. And we have materials ready to distribute through Unit 5 for low, moderate-income households, and it's very exciting. So steam kits from CDM, books and activities, et cetera, from us. Those will all be distributed via Unit 5. So it feels great. That was something that, it's a great partnership between the town and Discovery Museum and the library so that we could find a way to use that money to serve local kids, get books in their hands, and just a really good partnership. So kudos to Tori Onstad, Tori Malickin, for her work there, and thanks to Taylor Long and Mercy Davidson at the town for their work in making that happen. And that is it for my report, unless there are any questions.
Did you have any upcoming plans on opening the building?
So with the restrooms being down, we, Jess and I spoke about this last week. When we planned the restroom project, the assumption, we didn't factor in the pandemic, unfortunately.
Why not?
Yeah, next time we will. So the plan is, we're trying to nail down a date for completion of the restrooms. We have, I'm told, four weeks of tile work. That's yet to begin. Yeah, so, but the plan at the moment is, unless the board feels differently, we plan to continue with our curbside virtual programming and just not push that risk, I guess, in terms of not having restrooms for the public to use in terms of hand washing. We talked about hand washing stations, kind of mixed feelings on those, I guess. So at the moment, we're still seeing very low door counts at libraries in the community. Bloomington, they're a little busier than they were when they first opened up. I know they had a busy day last week. It was the last day of summer reading. They were particularly busy that day. I know their computer, their, their demand for computer use is slowly climbing, and that's probably our biggest concern at the moment, honestly, because we can't provide that. We can provide physical materials, virtual programming, digital content. We can't provide programming, or I'm sorry, computer use at the moment. So we're talking about some potential ideas there. A new idea that's come up, so some libraries are open and thinking about how do they take a step back and still offer as much service as possible. And one idea that's come up is some by appointment usage of the facility. So limit the number of people in the, in the library, as is being done now, but more proactively by establishing appointments for people, even just to browse, whatever they're doing in the library, but use appointments to control the number of people in the library. That would allow for computer use. Again, I think that we're trying to be careful of making sure that we can provide good hand washing opportunities for patrons. But that idea is intriguing because if, as we go backwards, I think, we'll go backwards more gracefully than we came forward in terms, like curbside will continue, I think, you know, for hopefully any duration unless things get quite bad. This, this per, this appointment idea is intriguing because, you know, we could provide computer use, I think, at that point. We've, we've had some issues, like with printing, for example. If patrons need printing, we'll just print it for them, frankly. So we're trying to serve as best we can and make things work. But that actually using a computer, that's something that we can't solve at the moment without the facility being open. We've, we've talked about, you know, a tent with computers in it, things like that. That gets tricky with weather. We don't really have a lot of devices that we could check out necessarily. So that's the one, that's our, I think, our biggest challenge at the moment. We've talked about staff on the phone helping complete forms for individuals, for example. You know, there's, there's some concerns there in some ways, too. But that's, that's one that we hope we can address in the relatively near future.
Cool. Pam?
What is, have you heard of any challenges Bloomington or other libraries our size have seen in opening and staying open?
Yeah. Again, been very slow. You know, I heard yesterday that Springfield, they were counting in, counting out, you know, keeping track, and they, they stopped doing that because it was the volume of people so low. They just, they don't need to do it any longer, or at least they don't at the moment. All ages are coming to the library. You know, it, it just, it's a personal decision, so it's, it's hard to say, you know, very broadly or very generally, like who's coming, who's not coming. I know when Bloomington first opened, they saw more children than they thought they would right off, off the, right out of the gate. And so I think we could expect more children, I guess, if we opened. Masks seem to generally be, that conversation is okay if someone's not wearing a mask. What happens is, the library staff member will indicate that the patron must wear a mask to come in, but if they choose not to, they can use curbside service or virtual programming, whatever. But the mask is required to come in. I think that conversation gets easier as, you know, retailers, et cetera, are making that same requirement. So that's going well overall, based on what I'm hearing. The, some libraries have a, you know, like maybe limited to an hour, for example. They're encouraging you to really use the library as grab and go, so there isn't a lot of seating. So I've heard that, for the most part, that works. Some people, again, they want to use the library as it was pre-pandemic, and it's different now. So it's, you want to get in, get your stuff, get out. One bit of good news, you know, we are concerned, as many libraries were about the sheer amount of space that all the curbside holds take up, and we're holding these hundreds and hundreds of books in the library. We've heard that that goes down by about 50% once you open doors. People will just come in and pick up their hold, so then that greatly reduces the amount of space that we need to process and store those holds, so that's good. That's a good factor for us in terms of planning for space. Overall, what we're hearing really is, though, it's just, it's quiet in terms of traffic. You know, traffic is pretty low compared to how it typically is this time of year. So again, I think there's that, there's a discomfort, you know, for many in the community in terms of coming into a library or a building like the library where it's a lot of people sitting, so.
Any other questions for Brian? We'll go ahead and move to the next item, the foundation report. What's new from the foundation front?
The foundation had a, had their annual meeting planned for earlier this month, and that had to get pushed out to September because of, they were, for the annual meeting, they're going to do their officer election, and at least one of the officers couldn't attend. The audit is taking place at the moment, and then, you know, considering this book sale would be huge for the foundation because a lot of their funding comes from the ongoing book sale and the two large book sales. So we're really trying to find a way to get that revenue for the foundation and also get all those books out in the community for everyone to enjoy and read. So related to, you know, looking at a part-time development position for the foundation, it's a tricky time to hire for any position, I think. I think the development community is, you know, it's challenged at the moment, frankly. This is a difficult environment to raise funds in. But I think, I feel confident we'll find a person for that position. Our goal is to have that position filled by Labor Day, which we're on track to do, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, next item, we have, there are three items for you to discuss. The first one being the 2021-2024 Strategic Planning Process. And you alluded to some of that in your earlier report.
Yeah, want me to go ahead and kind of summarize? Okay.
Please.
So the staff survey was completed. That's great. So that information then will, we wanted to be challenged from that, I think. You know, how do we do better? How do we, how do we help staff do better? Are we, are we aiming in the right ways? Look at, we asked staff to refer to our plan and think of how their job relates to that. How do we spend our time? How do we use our resources, et cetera? I haven't seen that data yet, but I have it. So next, the consultants will meet with the management staff and look at that data and talk about, you know, look at the structure. Can we, how do we structurally take this information and, for opportunities that help us work better based on the staff's input? Talk about implementing some changes there. Fingers crossed, August-ish, consultants will, will come to Normal, say, August, September, meet with a broader stakeholder group. Still, we're kind of waiting to see how we can do this. It could happen to be a Zoom, we're not sure at this moment. But to look at our current plan, which we think, if you remember when we started this process, we think our current plan in general is pointing in the right direction. But our question is, how do we refine that plan? How do we fine-tune a little bit to do better? And how do we, as staff, use our resources to do better in defining that plan? So consultants will be here, work with the community, some stakeholders, to refine and expand the focus of the current plan, depending on which way we need to go there. I'll mention Sue Hall, the lead consultant. She's had two hip replacements during this process, and the first went really well, second one, not as well. She's, she's, she's doing fine, but that's a little bit of a, of a concern just in terms of her taking a little bit of time to heal and do what she needs to do. But she just keeps moving forward. So again, there's kind of a question mark now as we face a number of parameters moving forward. We're hoping we can see the consultants here in August, September-ish, hopefully. We'll see, you know, at the time. Currently, we just can't say for certain way things are changing, so. And there, she'll engage the board, obviously, too, as we get further down this process, so. That, that's really the update, though. It is, it's, it's happening. We're moving forward, you know, kind of piece by piece. And I think it's going to get a little tricky here as we get into the fall. But it's, it's kind of, it's a, it's a difficult time to do this planning. I also think it's a great time to do this planning because we're, we're disrupted, and I think that's probably healthy in a lot of ways, and we're really forced to look at how do we, when we get kind of taken off our rails, how do we still serve the community? And what does the community need from us right now? It's, it's going well.
Any questions for Brian or anything to talk about for the strategic planning process? We'll go ahead then and move into COVID-19 update. I do. We'll go ahead then and move into COVID nineteen update. I do know if I remember correctly, uh, this week there had been some more sent out by the state on the mitigation plan by the governor and for our, the state. Uh, and giving some guidelines depending on, uh, I'm going to use the wrong term here, uh, phases, but it, one through four. Uh, it, it, what happens if we end up having more cases and how does that impact? Anything that we need to think about in terms of library service for that?
Well, I think, uh, key thing to share is, you know, staff are healthy, which is great. Uh, we've, we've talked about particularly as we look at, uh, you know, if we open, you know, splitting our staff, uh, kind of an A B scenario. We're not sure on that. Re- related to that, uh, we're talking and also related to strategic planning. You're looking at our hours. So if we, we split our staff essentially to, uh, kind of have two separate teams. We might condense our hours a little bit, probably trimming off those later hours more so than earlier. So, we're not sure and we've been fortunate so far. I think, uh, moving forward, um, I'm kind of sensing we might be challenged more just in terms of health as, as, uh, you know, ISG coming back, getting in the fall, et cetera. So we're preparing for that. We're, we're intentionally lean on staff as we've, uh, you know, had, we've had a couple of retirements. We've kept those positions vacant. We've lost a number of, uh, part-time staff um, over the course of the summer, graduation, et cetera. And we're, we're probably about as lean as we want to be at the moment, uh, but just trying to be careful and responsible there. Uh, I think, I, I feel like we can, we can kind of coast forward honestly, since we're already a step back compared to some libraries now. There's, there's still a, a fair number of libraries who have never opened. Uh, you're not facing the restroom challenge that we have at the moment. Uh, I, I sent out the Vernon area public library, uh, announcement, uh, yesterday, I think it was. So, um, you know, in, in concert with their school district, you know, kind of the community staying on the same page, I think. So, we, i- it's certainly possible that we, we stay with curbside throughout this, this window of opening, which, which might close at some point in the fall. Uh, if, if that does happen, I think the good news is we have, uh, curbside working really, really well and we feel confident we can continue that. Hopefully pretty, pretty deep into, um, you know, as, as things would progress. You know, I guess we've progressed in a way in terms of getting worse, but, um, we, we feel that we're in a good position at the moment. Uh, we have a good process. We can run it pretty efficiently. Um, but that, the idea of splitting the staff is something I've talked to the managers about. We, that might, that's what we want to be ahead of. That can get complicated in a hurry. Um, but I, I understand that, you know, that does make sense in a number of ways. So, uh, we do have a few staff who are working, uh, primarily from home, developing virtual programming. And also, uh, they help us, uh, spread out more as staff. So, uh, I mentioned that we are, well, maybe I didn't, we are Plexiglas dividers. We have those up in staff spaces at the moment. We have them in the building and ready for public spaces when we open. For some places, w- we bought as, as little Plexiglas as necessary. And where we needed big dividers like to separate, uh, patrons, for example, we bought, uh, whiteboards on wheels because we can use those for other, many other uses and those are really popular. And, uh, they actually cost less. So that was great. So we're ready in many regards to, to reopen and we have staff separated where we need to and we, we have staff not coming in the building. If you don't need them here, if that helps us, you know, stay separate. Biggest concern frankly, supply chain for cleaning, keeping the building clean. We've talked about, you know, basically have to make your own wipes at this point. Uh, we have some new, uh, like HEPA filtered vacuums that we didn't have before. Uh, so we're trying to really up our game in terms of our cleaning equipment and protocols. Uh, as everyone else is too. Uh, I'm on a, I have a Zoom tomorrow morning with, uh, facilities group, uh, from throughout the state of, uh, library directors and facility managers. And talking about this topic, you know, how do we, how do we keep our facilities clean and healthy? That's kind of easy if all the supplies are readily available and equipment, et cetera. But how do you do it when you can't necessarily get all the supplies to all of the equipment? Um, so that's a challenge. Uh, but it's, uh, it's better than it used to be in terms of the supply chain, but it's still, it's fragile, I think is probably a good term. So, uh, we're, we're certainly, um, hugging with that as we move forward. The sprayer that I mentioned, you know, that, that's great. Uh, that allows us to very effectively and quickly, uh, disinfect and sanitize surfaces. It's a great tool. Let's see. Yeah, I think that's, that's really the, the COVID update. We're just, as everyone is, we monitor information, you know, from the state and IDPH and the health department, CDC and, uh, we're, we're curious to see, um, how the school situation, you know, what that does. We've, we've looked at some of our resources online, for example. We're wondering, we're going to watch those stats, uh, you know, throughout the fall and see what happens there, you know, rollbook, for example, online. Unit five has a rollbook, uh, subscription. If parents pull books out of unit five, they'll rely on our subscription, for example. So, um, we're trying to, uh, provide resources that are relevant to, you know, the entire community, but, um, sometimes, you know, if, if students aren't in a, a public school or a private school, they only have the resources that we can offer. So we're trying to make sure that we have a good, robust offering there, um, whether the kids are homeschooled or, or typically in a, in a school setting, but temporarily out. So, uh, it's going to be interesting.
Do you know if the, if any of the unit five schools have any plans to link to item, digital items through NPL? The reason I ask, I, one of my friends is a, one of the school librarians at one of the District eighty-seven schools and she created a virtual classroom.
Yeah.
And you can link to the item at Bloomington Library.
Yeah.
And my, I was like, oh, that's so cool.
Yeah.
Oh, that could be really expensive. If you have hundreds of kids
Yeah.
getting an E, the same ebook.
Yeah. Um, so an advantage that eighty-seven, District eighty-seven has is all those students are served by Bloomington Public Library. So, unit five had, is, uh, comprised of students from five different library districts. So unit five has Bloomington, Normal, Towanda, Carlock and Hudson. So it'd be a little trickier, I think. So, you know, we, we did our big push with library cards, trying to get all those, uh, library districts together to get all the kids cards so that, um, teachers in schools could say, here's this resource and if we all commit to buying the same one, i- it's just, it's complic- it's more complicated for unit five. It's not impossible by any means, but they just.
So they're too scattered to down, to put through a thousand downloads of a book?
Uh, I don't know. But it's eighty-seven has it made in terms of the ease, knowing all those kids have Bloomington cards. That's really nice. Good for them. But unit five has, any, any student there could be from one of five different library districts and, we don't all have the same, uh, sources, you know, resources for the kids. So, that's, that's an instance though, where unit five could purchase something on their own. And then the kids could all get to it more easily. And that's, uh, we're in conversation with them trying to balance out. What do we have? What do they have? It's tricky though, particularly with, as you, I think, are referencing, it's like pay per use, for example, that can get really expensive in a hurry. So, uh, yeah, it's tricky. I think the key thing is make sure the library kid, the cards, the students have library cards. And if the teachers could encourage them to, you know, go to your, or look at your public library's webpage or, or have your parents look, or you know, just know what your public library offers you with that card. I think that's the key. Conversation to have right now. I wish that could, that would be fantastic if that could happen.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move to our next discussion point, which is the, uh, twenty-one, twenty-six budget. And, uh, I know, uh, that is something that with COVID, you know, makes it a little harder to project a few things, but, uh, Brian, anything you want to talk about on that?
I, I mentioned earlier our, our physical collections and that was a concern. Uh, we just weren't sure how these, uh, trends were going to look with the use of digital. Um, so relieved again, just to see digital fall off a bit as physical became available. Cause that, that's certainly more detrimental for us in terms of budget. Um, so we are going to continue building these robust physical collections. And, uh, grow, we're ready to grow digital as necessary, but we're not going to, uh, you know, I guess, front load that as much as, as we might otherwise. If conditions change, we can no longer put physical items in our patrons' hands. Then we'll probably do that and we'll pull back on physical and, and push digital a bit more. So, long story short though, I think we feel, uh, okay at the moment. We can, we can balance that and, and, uh, and adjust as necessary. Uh, and again, the, the issue that we're facing with collection building at the moment is these delays in the supply chain ordering items. Not really knowing when they'll come. So that, that's a challenge. And then again, budget, you know, we're, we're asking questions and this is part of strategic planning, just, you know, this kind of global question. In terms of hours, are we, are we open the right hours? Are we open too many hours? Are we open not enough hours? What about the vulnerable population hours? And we've, we've seen some, uh, at least retail in the community, um, end that vulnerable hour, hour service. Uh, we've asked the question, if we offer it, um, do we do it from nine to ten or do we open at eight and do it from eight to nine? You know, what's typical is I guess that, uh, you know, staff might be at the door reminding everyone coming in that that hour is reserved for vulnerable populations, but it's not necessarily enforced. It's difficult to know, you know, why someone might need, need that special hour. But we just, um, again, factoring in seniors, for example, if we're open at eight in the morning, that might feel better for seniors. Um, if you think of our mornings, we've been here early in the morning at nine, it was a nine to ten. That's seniors and very young children and parents. That's, that's, uh, who's here typically. So, uh, we're just asking that question about our hours. And, uh, you know, every hour that we're open, it does have a cost to it, obviously, but we're trying, again, our goal is to, uh, optimize use of our resources to best serve the community. So, so we look at our hours. So eight to nine P M, for example. Do we need to be open eight to nine P M, four nights a week? Probably not, based on, on what we've seen in terms of activity. Maybe that out, maybe one of those hours goes somewhere else. Maybe it just comes earlier. Maybe that better serves our community, particularly factoring in the, the seniors. So, so, you know, certainly interested in hearing any input, any of you have on that, but we're, we're asking questions like that in terms of looking at how we've been structured in the past hours, et cetera, and how we might, um, make more use of that or better serve the community in the future. Uh, just a reminder, you know, budget's a long discussion. So we'll, uh, we'll bring a, a full budget to the board in August. Talk, go line by line and look at any changes that we're proposing. So, uh, we can factor in the, you know, the, the revenue changes. So we're looking at a five percent reduction in property tax and then taking out the fine revenue, uh, DVD fee, photocopies, et cetera. So in a, currently we're in a, we're in a good position, um, regardless of all that. So.
And thankfully we don't have to rely on coffee sales.
Yes.
The family had a question.
So do you have any data about usage? I mean, as far as peak hours of when customers are there, what days of the week to go on or are, is this just a general sense of where?
Yeah. Yeah. So Sundays are, are busy. You know, people, Sunday is just being very compact and we're open four hours. So during regular times, that's, uh, a very busy time. So, uh, I was here last, let's see, two Saturdays ago. It, it's interesting, interesting to see how it is impacted with curb it too. So, kind of steady throughout the morning, but afternoon really picked up on Saturday. So for whatever reason, Saturday afternoon was quite a bit busier than Saturday morning. And, uh, probably just people are maybe more slow to get up and, you know, get going on Saturday. Typically what we see, almost regardless of the day of the week, we're busy from that, you know, nine to noon. And then, uh, kind of lunchtime to, you know, three-ish is probably our slowest time of the day. And then there's after school and after work comes in and we get busy at night. So, um, that's pretty consistent Monday through Thursday. And then Friday, later on Friday is typically pretty busy. Uh, so you're kind of preparing for the weekend, et cetera. In, in general, that's our Saturdays are, are typically busy. And I would say probably like Saturday afternoons, even when we're open, are busier than Saturday mornings to you. But, um, it's not unusual to have people waiting at outside the doors any day of the week and waiting for us to open. So.
Anything else budget-wise, uh, questions or? We'll go ahead then move to the next item, unfinished business of which there is none unless there's something that we completely forgot after all that, which I don't believe we did. Uh, any items for our next agenda that anyone would like to suggest added? Well, our next meeting date is August twenty-sixth on twenty twenty and as Brian mentioned, uh, I'll be talking a lot more about budget at, at that point. So something to look forward to. And unless I hear anything from the group as a large, I'm going to say we are adjourned. So, thank you all very much. Uh, as always, thanks to the NPL staff for all that they do and continue to do for the community and for our patrons. And I hope everyone has a good evening tonight.
You too.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.